Good morning, thank you for being here, for your stand, we're gonna land in the first square. Barbara, he's gonna close out our ear, and everybody just stand there for our place.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day today, our many blessings, and Father, just thank you for the opportunity that we have today to be here in this room. Father, I just pray that you be with these commissioners, since they make important decisions for you in this county. I thank you for everyone that's in attendance today, and the families that are represented here today. Fathers, we enter this Christmas season, we just ask that you watch over us, any of us that be traveling during this holiday season, just keep us safe. And as we gather with family and friends in exchange of presents, never let us forget what the true meaning of Christmas really is, and then we receive the greatest gift, and that is the birth of your son. Father, just thank you for this day, we pray that you just watch over us, as we carry on with our responsibilities each and every day, and forgive us of our sins, all this we pray in your name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Call ordered a regular session of the Benton County Commissioners Court on Wednesday, December the 23rd, 2020, at nine thirty AM. That form is established with all members of the court present. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the meeting of the Commissioners Court approval of same for December the ninth, 2020. So, let me hear it, sir. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, signed by Commissioner Melton, any questions, corrections, additions to the minutes? Being none, all in favor of approvals, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted. So, got a motion by Commissioner West, and a second by Commissioner Brown. Any questions or discussion about bills? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying of county bills as submitted. So, got a motion by Commissioner Melton, second by Commissioner Pearson, any questions? Or discussion around five county bills? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item number five, general business. The county will be closed for the next two days, Thursday and Friday into this week, for some Christmas holidays. Yeah, as y'all probably were aware, the hospitalization rates exceeded fifteen percent for seven days. I've been signing a certification form yesterday, with a Texas alcohol beverage commission. Close the bars back down, and to restrict businesses, and it's according to Governor Abbott's chief order, GA thirty-two. We want to look at business for like, where you see, we pretty well lays it out in that order. As I said, we did do that, and it affects the hospitals, heartcreations, and stuff, so we did go back to fifty percent because of the high hospitalizations. One other thing today is Brandon's last night to serve, is our Benton County Commissioners Court. I will get to publicly thank you, Brandon, for the work that you have done, no one under oath. No one understands, because they're there.
That's right.
The pressures, the responsibility, when I walked in, I want to thank you for your friendship, for the job you've done, you've been serving, I would thank you for everything you've done.
I want to say thank you to Brandon, for sharing an office for four years, and helping me out a whole lot, I never, I never met Brandon until I decided to jump in this five years of government, I appreciate all the help you've given me.
And I would too, thank you for your service and friendship, and what you've been doing for the team. Oh, yeah, I'm gonna thank you for your friendship too, service, tough job out there. Lot of complaints, you did a good job, you were on top of your roles, and just ready for you to get up, and, man, everybody loves you, Brandon.
I want to say one other thing, first, I have never seen any missionary in Brandon County leave my office, and you're leaving, that you've been so noble to help the man that's come here. You had sent a palace, his friends, and invite, and I tell you what, that's huge, very thankful for that, very much.
Showed you integrity, your integrity, how transitions are supposed to be, you said exactly, you said tomorrow happen, you allowed Brandon, Chad to come in, use your career, and you. And I, Brandon, and I talked, and he said he's available, if Chad has any questions in the future. But, you've been a friend, thank you for your years of service, and what you give for that.
Well, I appreciate it, I made a lot of friends here, congratulations. Been a tough year, and leaving myself personally, stuff I went through, guy called Adam Black, I appreciate him. Friendship's more important than anything, you know, we had a goal when we came here, and we did, we were gonna be dead first, and we were gonna get there, and that's the most important thing, moving more in, and friendships, my wall was come by, yelling at y'all. I talked to Jerry Jackson last time, I was with Michael, I wish I knew Michael, my best friend, we was giving Jerry Jackson more time last time, wearing out and stuff, and I told him I was, you know, pleading and stuff, and they go, I'm not Jerry talks, and you imagine that, so. I appreciate everything, so I'll definitely be in contact, you know, when I get out of here, check on y'all, and all the, I appreciate everything, thank you very much. So, thank y'all, I appreciate you.
Is there any other general business we need to make, Mr. Brown?
Yes, Judge and Commissioners, the federal Families First Coronavirus Relief Act is set to expire on December thirty-first. And what this is, is when we had an employee who tested positive, or they had a dependent that they had to care for that tested positive, this is what allowed us to grant them the additional sick time to take off, so that they could recover and then return to work without having to take a financial hit. Well, it expires December thirty-first, and I've had the feelers out there, and I've heard nothing about them extending it. There are some counties that are going to extend it, and I'm not sure how they're figuring all that out with how they're gonna pay for it, but unless this changes, this Families First Coronavirus Relief Act will expire on December thirty-first. So if I have a, an employee who tests positive, they will be on their own to burn their own sick comp or vacation time while they stay home and recover, or move to a no-pay status. We'll just wait and see what the federal government does with that.
Now, I got a message from on the server that they are extending the care grant till next year, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, so they may be extending that as well.
Okay, that would be great.
But, and I sent you an email about that, to see if you've gotten anything.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know, that big gun, where? Thank you, Dan, is there any other general business we need to be working on? Being none, we'll move over to item number six, public comments, stop, was there any people who want to sign up for public comments now?
Joe?
Nope. Okay, public comments, we'll move to item number seven, discuss annual pay and natural resources program here in our place. Tommy Phillips, our agent officer, is here to present.
Well, good morning, Judge Commissioners, I'm from my office, Mr. Brown, we want to say thank you for your support for all the years that you put in, for your support for us. Give y'all, this is our, my in-depth summaries from the year on my two major program areas. It's not a typical year, you lift your fingers and do this, but I'm not doing that now. Just kind of go through real fast, not to take too much time on anybody, about what we were able to actually get accomplished, it's been a nice thing, and we were very blessed, most of our livestock and forage distribution programming that we do. Thanks parts in January, March, so we were able to get that pulled off before we were locked down, so if you can look at those, the Northeast Texas Government Conference was held, we did it in Quineland, the East Texas Sports Conference, we held it in Emery. And right before we got locked down, I mean, the Friday before, we had our Upper Sevignon Government Conference out here at Starkey Ranch, so we were able to get that, you know, in transitioning over to virtual, I never thought of myself as being one of those old agents, but I've been doing this for twenty-four and a half years. I'm kind of set in my ways, but now that we're doing things virtually, we've done several things, and Judge, you've been on several of them that we've done, they're not as attended as we are in person, but we're getting a lot of good comments from them. And, you know, that's where we're gonna be heading, especially while we're still in this pandemic touch setting. We just wrapped up our Trinity Valley Festive Conference last week, we had, right at eighty on it, had our Tri-City Festive Brokeback in October, same thing, we were, for the numbers, when we joined up, we're able to hold our annual HAD evaluation clinic that Mr. Melton attended. Some things that we've done as a, as a group of agents, fortunately, we're twenty-two counties in this district, that go all the way from Gainesville to Taxarcanet, we're the most southern county. Our back in March, and this whole thing started blowing up, we're like, how can we transition and make this thing where people at home are still getting information they can't come to, so we, we started doing this still called live. Some of y'all have, may have seen that, it's basically a Facebook video series that we started doing, there's been one every week since that started, I've done three. One of them was on Texas Brownsville, I'm not sure they actually posted, that's the old yellow weed that y'all see in March, everybody calls it Hopkins County dairy weed, and everybody calls in March and April, and I'd get rid of it, and I'm like, it's still go away. We then transitioned and did one on brush control, and it was the third most watched one of the series, there's over fifteen hundred views on it. And then Steve Goan and I did one back in October on Winter pasture planting, so that's, that's the things that we're able to get done in the livestock and forage end of things. You know, we, you can kind of see what all the programs that we put on was still, you know, educational, three hundred and forty thousand dollars that we were able to help save producers. But the one program that's really suffered this year, and it's because of the age of my student member volunteer, whatever you want to call it, my horticulture program, my master gardeners, and most of them are still going strong. Obviously, our gardens have been really well attended, well prepared, we're now the sole caretakers of the Blackwell House Museum grounds now, for the, around the house, and that's thankfully to the Historical Society there that kind of managed to save. The two that we have at our office and the Kent Junior High Pollinator Garden, we also maintain the Will's Point Depot Museum as well, some of the master gardeners do there. So, we were actually right in the middle of our twenty twenty Master Gardener interim class when this whole thing hit, and we had to transition over from going in person every Wednesday to, okay, y'all stay at home, we're gonna, we're gonna beat you over, you know, a Zoom link, and y'all gonna be able to do that. Most of them were able to finish that off and get that handled, out of the fourteen that we had, eight of them finished their fifty hours before the end of December, so they were able to pick off themselves, certified master gardeners, we're very proud of that fact. Again, you can see what the master gardeners have still contributed, you know, eighty-nine thousand dollars just from the master garden program volunteer service. The community garden that they all have heard about, or may have seen, or some, you know, some of the publicity that we've done, it's right next door to the Children's Advocacy Center, that this will be the fourth year coming up. We've had some leadership changes on that, some life things got on the way, and we've got some new leadership there, we've got some soil amendments that have been put in, we're very excited about it, it is a hundred by four hundred foot garden. In this last year, it's been about five people taken care of, before that it was three, so if you can imagine, if you've got, I've got a twenty by thirty, and it's all I can do with my time to keep up with it, like forty by one hundred, it's a huge garden. So we've got some composts that's been brought in, we're fixing to bring in some mulch, and really try to maximize the amount of produce that we can yield out of that. We did get the yield out of it like we wanted to this last year, mainly because of, number one, the pandemic, and number two, life got in the way for some folks, we're really excited about, six hundred and nineteen pounds was actually yielded this last year. So, those are some things that are, that have happened this year, we're still able to get some, get some things accomplished again, you know, even when we're locked down, we're still, still operating, still taking phone calls, we're still files on the phone, and I don't have to just tell the guy I'm doing landowner, you know, trying to get this place, so. We're still there, we're here, still here to serve, our phones not bringing off, typically, we're still there, so, any questions for, for me that I can address, anybody?
Appreciate you.
We only thank y'all.
I was like, thank you, and I know it's difficult, I know, when you last, last, last Friday against it was the Trinity Valley.
Yes, sir.
Best idea, it started out that it was gonna be in person.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then it transitioned, okay.
We're gonna do it hybrid.
Go, go to virtual and in person, and then it transitioned from that into it's virtual.
Yeah.
And I was a part of that, great job, Tommy, you guys did a great job, I hope the numbers not what you normally have when you go down to play like.
Yes, sir.
And you did a great job, hats off to you, it's difficult, it's difficult for all.
Everybody, I know, I can't, I can't say it's any worse for us than anybody.
To the listeners, you guys did a great job, and you know we have the permission.
Yes, sir, we appreciate that more than y'all, thank you.
Anything else for the comment?
Thank y'all, y'all have a great presentation.
Thank you. Item number eight, discuss and consider signing the Flood Control and Water Agreement contract to repair Cedar Creek Dam one twenty-nine and Cedar Creek Dam one thirty-six. Arjo is overseeing all that, so.
My head is visioned, we're almost through with construction on one thirty-five city, and the Texas Soil and Water Conservation Board has sent us the contract to start the work on Cedar Creek one twenty-nine and one thirty-six. We have already budgeted for those, those projects, but we want to start, we want to get both things in action, but we do want to start on one at a time, Cedar Creek one twenty-nine will be our next, next dam to start the construction on. So I'm, I'm gonna just make the motion that we approve the county judge to sign off on these contracts.
Sir?
Both of them.
Both of them, one twenty-nine and one thirty-six?
Yes.
Sir? Got a motion by Commissioner Melton, second by Commissioner West, any questions or discussion about this contract? So are we gonna be joining those together, and moving water together, or there being?
They need to, I've been in touch with Jamie Holmes, who's administrating, administrating the county, county on the one thirty-five city, she's thinking there is a possibility that we can go forward on both these, these dams here, they're just about four miles apart. So it would be convenient if they could kind of start on these, these together.
Check in on that?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion, questions? Being none, all in, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item number nine, discuss and consider courthouse preservation grant. Tim, did you want to go with that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to, what this is all about, you know, we went through the process of turning down our plans and answering their questions, they have an application, they have this twenty-one questions, but it, it takes pages on each question, it's not like it's just a yes or no. And all the, not all the counties, but a lot of counties throughout the state apply for this, well, this year, the courthouse grant money that the state appropriated, got cut back some at the end, and we ended up one, one point out of getting the grant for our courthouse. And which I really was not too happy about, but that's the way it came out, and then here about two weeks ago, I got a call from them, and they said one of the counties was not gonna be able to use their money, and they put some of it in some emergency stuff, but they had three million dollars, and they would give us as a grant to work on, to do the courthouse. Now, normally, we, they would approve up to about six billion dollars is what, that's the maximum that they can give a county, and our case is what it would have been because, not till yesterday, it doesn't have the actual number, but the new estimate on cost is just under twelve million dollars. It went about nine, or a little over nine, and they made one change that ran it up to just right at twelve million, and the change was, all of our stone on the outside of the building, I know you've noticed, some of it's popped out, and what's happening? These stones were put in, or they were connected with a series of rods, metal rods, and these rods have started rusting, and as they rust, they get bigger, and they're popping that stone off, okay? So they say now that we have to replace all the stones on the whole building, at a cost of about three point two billion, which to me is crazy, but that's what, that's what they say they want to do, so that made our total cost up to right at twelve million dollars. And I don't know, you know, and they would, they would give us three billion today to go toward that, which means we had to come up with nine, Dan says he can't get that out of his budget, and I'm not sure the rest of us can, and actually, what we have to do is go out to the constituents throughout the county and talk about flooding bond, or something to that effect. I don't know, in this type of environment that we're in right now, we don't have a clue of how we're gonna come out on our taxes this year, we don't know if people are gonna be able to pay or not pay, they don't have jobs, they may not, so it may be, maybe a year is gonna be real tough, dollar wise anyway, so I don't know what everybody's feeling is on this, I, I don't know that the people will even vote for the approval to spend nine million dollars more than what we have to, in, in what they give us, to redo the courthouse. And I really have to say that because I've been pushing this thing for all six years I've been in here, I've made this application three times, now, they did say, if the state appropriates more money in the next session for courthouse approval, that they may, that they would more than likely give us two point six billion more, which is, would bring us up to about what they would have donated to us in the first place. But that still is gonna leave us somewhere around six million dollars or so, that we're gonna have six point four billion that we're gonna have to pay out of our own pocket, and I just kind of leave it up to everybody, and we'll go do our things. Or if you think we need to go out to the, I've kind of let them know something, if, if we're gonna do it, I need to tell them that we're gonna, we'll do it, but we're gonna have to go out to all of the constituents and see what they say, if they want to approve them long or not, and that's kind of what we are.
Would this, is this a major undertaking that we'd probably have to move some of our offices out of the courthouse?
Uh, there would, there would be considerable time that we would have to move in and something else, you know, not necessarily the whole courthouse at one time, you know, we might have to move out, you know, one section at a time, but yes, it will have, there will be times, and actually, there will be times when everybody's gonna be out, when they're doing the electoral, that's how, that's gonna be out.
And you're talking about major construction, it's a, it's a major, oh.
Yeah.
It's, it's gonna push up, but not, funny enough fact for me, it's all little hidden costs, things if you're talking about moving in and out.
Yeah.
Things just gonna take place that it's not gonna be budged for, so if you're sitting over there with two, three billion dollars in reserve, how much of that money are you gonna use, just on the little hidden stuff that you don't know about? Because it's not like you're starting to move, I mean, it's like anything, you're a strict housing market, whatever, else you're going to do a remodel job for somebody, you always get those old, they know about that, you know, always kind of think, like, it's a contractor, and you can tell, you're gonna have so much hidden things in this thing, it's gonna be unreal, you should watch out for yourself into it.
Well, there, there is a lot of money that they put in fifteen percent, continue to, because of things, it's like what you're talking about, I mean, I don't think it's gonna be any worse than what they've said. I got all the breakdown in there, located, and if you're talking about cost, yes, I think it's gonna be more.
It's gonna be.
It's, it's, it's gonna be more, and that's what, which, my position for the record, is we've spent six years trying to get out of that. From when I came in, we was eight point seven, we've got less than two, so we spent six years trying to get out of that, I do not believe that you could restore this courthouse for less than fifteen million, I think that would be a conservative figure, because that, to me, it doesn't figure out, it doesn't figure in the relocation of the courthouse, where, where are you going, you don't rent a building, where are you going, I don't think it figures the relocation. Yeah, the courts, we asked, we asked this year, going into this. Yeah, well, yeah, the courts, uh, we asked, we asked this year, going into this budget year, that the elected officials, due to the tax, uh, collection uncertainty, we asked each department head and elected official to figure on the same budget that they had last year. Uh, our citizens are struggling. Our, our, our citizens of Vansack County, we, we hear you, you're struggling. And, uh, we've got businesses going out of business here in Vansack County. Uh, we are living in uncertain times. And you see the government, I, I was told this morning, uh, that it got decedent when you're talking about the, the federal government, giving stimulus to the citizens because of these struggles. Uh, you know, we, we, we live in very uncertain times. Uh, I think the citizens of Vansack County would like to see the roads fixed before the courthouse resists. That's just my thinking. Uh, we are, legislation in Austin, there is a push in Austin that they believe local control of Vansack County begins in Austin. Uh, we believe, I believe, I personally believe that we may see some more guns this year in legislation. Uh, I see Vansack.
President, we want to introduce your board.
When you're, you're exactly right, they want to run it from Austin, but here they've got a little problem figured out. Is they want to run it from Austin, but they won't count any of them.
Yeah.
They can't turn around and make fun of this part. And so in Vansack County, when I look at the priorities, uh, here in Vansack County, number one, our roads are, need, need some attention. And we're doing, and we added a hundred and twenty-four thousand to the budget this year for the roads. Uh, we all know that law enforcement officers that lay their life on the line every day, we're losing officers to other counties. Uh, we need to work on salaries for our law enforcement officers, DA's office. These attorneys coming out of, uh, law school and they come to Vansack County, we need to work on their radio equipment. We just had a price on radio equipment for over three billion dollars for a radio, uh, system in Vansack County. Uh, sheriff's department, uh, vehicles. Uh, you know, I believe when Austin gets serious about restoring courthouses, they come, it would be open. But as long as you want to throw a little bit of money out there to the county and then the county jump on that and say, okay, hey, we're going to ask our citizens to pay, what you can cut is to three and a half percent. Uh, I don't support it at all. I mean, my, my position is I do not support it. It wouldn't, I wouldn't hesitate to pick up the phone and call them. You know, everyone to start restoring courthouses, give us thought, but kill the young. And that's where it's available right there, is a county can't do it. There's a county, there's a.
Well, I don't think they.
There's, there's a county out there that said, look, they looked at it and said, we, y'all got us in a position where we can't do it now.
Well, one thing that they said, that's it, that they offered to another county before it come to us and they rejected.
They can't, they didn't afford it. We're not, I don't think that, I don't, I'm far away with that. And twelve million dollars to a little bit more, a little brandy.
Well, I think you.
Well, you're, you're probably at twenty, twenty-five million, but I was saying, you know, because you're going to be fifteen, sixteen million dollars from being done. Well, you know what really shocked me was the number shocked me, but the real thing shocked me was it's four hundred and eight dollars a square foot. To redo it. That's a, that would be a lot. And, and I'm not saying, and what did we gain? We gained no, no office space, we, we, we gained no more room. This courtroom was too small, but you, you gained nothing. And we don't, what, what year was this courthouse? What, what year was it built?
Thirty-seven.
Nineteen thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
We are not living in nineteen thirty-seven, my friend. We're, we need to think about the safety of our courthouse personnel. And, and these new court, the, the courthouses that's being built today has safety in mind. Uh, instead of walking, everybody, joining everybody together in the halls and, I, I just.
Yeah.
But that's just my opinion.
And, and I, I don't think I would support a nine billion dollar renovation right now, and I don't think the citizens would support it. But what I would, what I would support is just a renovation of the outside of this.
And we've got to do some, our courthouse looks terrible.
Yeah.
I mean, it is embarrassing.
I think if you get some numbers on that, I think maybe we could afford that just to, because it looks better.
It does, and I contacted, before Thanksgiving, I contacted the one that did the monument out there.
Yeah, on the corner, on the, on the corner of the story.
He told him, I, and there's a timber for the muquestrator on the outside of the courthouse to take all that black out of it and everything. And I called him for Thanksgiving, he's supposedly getting us a fork to us to clean. I, I think everyone's in agreement that we got to do something to, to, uh. Well, we have, we have leaks, we have terrible fourth and fifth hole up here with glass out of the, out of the windows there. Windows have to be fixed and that's not going to be cheap. Uh, but we have, you know, I think that's part of our problem. We don't spend any money on this courthouse as far as maintaining the thing goes for years, literally years. And, and if we're not going to go this route, and, and, and certainly it would be crazy to be happy. Uh, but I, I think that we've got in our next budget, we better start appropriating money to get this thing where it doesn't fall down eventually. And I agree.
The county has this, this is totally, only the Nova, stipulation is in there for. And you can't, you can't help with this outside.
No, they, they have, uh, two different things. They have emergency grants, like if you had a boiler blew up or something and, and you don't have any money, fix it. And they, they will appropriate money for that. Or they'll appropriate money for a planning grant, which we got last time and we've done all the planning. And then the last one is total restoration. There is no, just, you know, fix the outside stuff, they don't have that. Now, I think that they're, I mean, they want to change. This, this six million dollars is the most that they can give any county restoration. And, uh, and having include, that reason I said we'd get two point four million additionally if it's approved in the next session, because instead of the three billion, we've already gotten six hundred thousand, that was in this planning grant. And, uh, they raised, they changed the percentages on the planning grant after we got it, it was fifty-fifty. And they raised it to thirty-seven, which saved us a hundred eighty thousand right there. Uh, but they're also wanting to raise that six billion because they realize that particularly in, in, in four counties, they can't afford to produce their, their courthouse with.
Well, the Ontario's a big restorationist, it's all people, rural counties.
Yeah.
It's like, we're going to make fraud.
Well, the best policy candidates have already done it.
Yeah.
They've already gotten there.
Yeah.
It wasn't really a deal, right?
Right.
You know, they just took that in extra money.
And a mortgage, a mortgage grant, if the court would want.
Yeah.
And you don't have any, either, are you?
Yeah.
How long did you think the process would be to apply for that mortgage?
You're going to be going for a.
You don't like them.
Uh, don't know.
And if, if you ever proceed.
You're going to be going for a.
Fan hot, or hot one too.
Well, it won't be far. So, but, you know.
You know, we should get both of your seven, they should get, hoping to get their back.
Tim, I'd, I'd like to thank you for all your work.
Don't make that.
You're playing on me, I do been very dedicated on it. And my stance has never changed from the beginning. Uh, I can never authorize spending that kind of money without voter approval, which I believe you feel the same way. Uh, my, my suggestion is it might be that we don't give anything and let the people of Vansack County know. And if, if the need is out there, they can, they can provide us with a petition, like other, other ways to prove, to give us a feedback of what the county did. I believe we can move forward from that, but I don't know if your timeline lets you do something.
Uh, Tim, also thank the Stewart Commission, I know they put a lot of work in on that, and I know you're a part of that. I appreciate the work they've done. But I think Tim needs to know one way or another, yeah, you know, to let him know.
Yes, I, I'll, I'll, I'll.
Okay, we need to decide.
Is this a voting?
I think, I think, I think, I think it is.
Yes.
It's good. Okay, what's the? I'm not ready to make, I want to draw that somewhere. Uh, there, why, I said it, I said it, you know, he's going to cover it right now. It's actually not a good situation, okay? And I'll say that. Uh, motion by Commissioner Brown not to, uh, pursue the courthouse preservation grant at this time.
Yes, sir.
That's a motion by Commissioner Brown, second by myself. Any questions or discussion?
I just want to add to what you've given us, not just that, you could.
I, I agree with you too. And you've worked your tail off on this. We, we've sit there in Washington, doing, paying work for this city, doing all of this. I just think our financial, we don't know we're going to be facing.
Yeah, and that would be my.
You know, I'm leaving out of here and it's, it's on the other channel there, sitting in a spot here with you guys, uh, you know, we've worked a long time to get ourselves down to this, but we actually haven't. Eight, eight years ago, we were struggling. I didn't even have a survey camp when I came in here. I just didn't want to come to this forum. And this courthouse needs to be a bad one. This, this county's growing, we moved some divisions that are going in, the things just, we're heading in the right direction. We really are, but we just don't want to go with, just want to, we're going to face it, it's going to strike. It's, it, that's a scary thing to try to make yourself that kind of money and something not go by. So, we do appreciate you.
Yeah, well, we, we have a good, it was two point six.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And I do think the planning grant was a good grant, it gets you.
Oh, hands down. You know, like that. State just looks back on, counties like, counties like, counties like us, and we're the ones that struggle financially, or rural counties. But, and, and they know that, don't they? It's almost like, we're giving this money, we're going to act as, we're, we're still about three million dollars sitting down here because nobody's going to take it. Yeah, and that's, you've got to think about what another risk I can, you know, I'm going to ask you that. Yeah, exactly, I, well, I do appreciate it, you know.
So we have a motion, second, any other discussion, questions? Motion by, motion of second was to not, uh, pursue the courthouse preservation grant at this time. All in favor to say aye, those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number ten, discuss and consider approving replant for lot nine, lot two, or strange estate plant in prison. Commissioner Milton, that's yours.
Yes, uh, Commissioner, uh, this is just replant, five extra lot, regaining two and a half acres of these. They call them the rules and regulations and the subdivision rules. So I make a motion that we approve this replant.
Second, got a motion by Commissioner Milton, second by Commissioner Pearson. Is there any questions or discussion on the replant of the forest orange estate for Burger? Being done, all in favor say aye, aye, those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number eleven, discuss and consider funds for COVID nineteen custodian, which is ending on December thirtieth, twenty twenty. Did you have anything?
Well, this, it's not permanent yet, and it's extending to twenty twenty nine, but that's the messages that I need. So I guess we'll just leave it as this for now, which I don't know.
I don't think you can leave it as it is for now because we have. We have an employee that's working and we have to be able to draw funds from somewhere to pay that employee. So if that dries up in seven days, how do we pay that employee?
No, I'm saying leave it as this to move her.
She's saying, what are you going to use that?
Leave, leave it like it is on the agenda. And then if it comes to it and it does extend, then we'll.
Yeah, but we got that there.
Yes.
I thought they didn't approve it.
They, they have.
They think they, they think they did. The confirmation, they didn't?
Yeah, yeah, but after we jumped through all the hoops and finally the state told them, go ahead and approve all of it, then they did.
Okay.
So, so right now she's being paid out of the COVID nineteen fund.
Correct.
So this is to move her back to regular, was it building maintenance or public building?
We did all under quarter.
No, we did not.
Yeah?
No, we did not.
A dollar worth?
No, we did not.
Is there money in that fund to pay her?
Uh. There is because we, back in June, when we moved Erin to full time and took her out of that fund and put her in the COVID one, that left you with a part-time position. So you have, well, you've lost the June, July, August, September money, but you still have the October, November, December money for that part-time person. Are you following me?
Yeah.
Okay, that money is sitting there kind of as a slush fund that you could pay Erin until this potentially comes back and they fund more COVID. But it's not enough to carry her through the remainder of fiscal twenty-one.
I understand, but, but our next, I figured in, uh, is that one day that she's going to work that week that, and then actually she's off that day. We can go for the next, we'll go more in two weeks and hoping on to that.
I would think so, Tim.
So you want table, yes?
My motion is the table, it's there because for sure.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, through table, uh, item number eleven, got a second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion, if we have more clarity of what direction we're headed at that time. Okay? All in favor say aye, aye, those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number twelve, discuss and consider changes to Vansack County policies, uh, one C dash five and one C dash six. Uh, Dan, you would like to discuss the court?
So, these are really Scott, the IT department's policies, it's how they manage those two things. But he came to me and, uh, the HR office helped him to further refine what he wants. So Scott, why don't you go ahead and take that?
We just, uh, added some things to, uh, on one C five, I don't know what else we added. And this is, this is things that people can't email, kind of defensive policy and stuff like that. We also added that it can't be anything that's HIPAA regulated or personal information about themselves or any other person. And pretty much the same thing on one C six, that was on number eight. Same thing, it just, uh, forbids employees from sending any, you know, pain, revane, or abuse of content. Also, we added a HIPAA to that. Those clauses are already there, we just added the HIPAA information.
And what this come up from is we had a department that had an individual, addressed the IT department, to send out to everyone about a health concern situation. Scott did not feel like it was appropriate, uh, to send that out and correct me at any point, Scott. Uh, he didn't feel like it was appropriate to send that information due to, wasn't the family, the HIPAA and everything. That department feels like, well, you send it out for others. You send it out, we're being singled out, we, uh, and, and so it's clarified and everything. And my, my deal is, I just want it the same, straight across the board. Everyone straight to the same and everyone, we don't do it for one and we don't do, and then we do it for the other. And, uh, talk to the Scott and everything, put that in there.
Good luck.
Bye. Would you like to correct it, Scott?
That's correct.
And these changes will, will, you know, make it even across the board.
The, uh, a lot of that stuff's already in there, we just, and, and, you know, we, we added the HIPAA and personal information just to strengthen that. But HIPAA is across the board.
I'm like, motion, we accept these changes.
I'll second it, dude.
Say, got a motion, uh, by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Brown, to approve these changes to Vansack County, uh, policy one C dash five and one C dash six. to approve these changes to Van Zet County policy one C dash five and one C dash six. Scott, kinda, what is allowed and what is not?
Actually, the only thing allowed is county business information, anything to do with training or department closures for whatever reason. That's the only thing we would send out on the mass event for everybody. Okay, things that everyone needs to know about that pertains to county business.
Yeah, and, and I got it, I got notified that, and I showed you where we sent stuff out for an, for an employee here that, uh, had a tragedy and stuff, and we joined together in the district courtroom to do a video. Sought it and encouraged you, and I thought it was a good video. But that then gets thrown up, well, that's not county business. Is it county business? We, we won't do this over here, but you'll do this over here. Where's the lack? I, I think that's what's getting us in trouble. That was an employee.
That is county business.
That was a director employee. Actually, we shut down the office for it, and we were all leading in the district court. And.
The thing you gotta be careful with about policies is the tighter that you control it, the more you lock it down. You have to remember that whatever you come up with, you have to live with that policy. And, and so when I bring you guys policies, I intentionally leave it a little bit vague, which allows us a little bit of wiggle room. Because once you lock it down, you're stuck with that. And I spent a couple of years in the military. I know about this, and you gotta be real careful about that. So when I bring them to you, that's how they're gonna be. And you guys can always decide, hey, tweak this, tweak that. You've sent me back to the drawing table multiple times on other policies. This was the first time a policy went through with very little discussions, so I'm happy about that. But I just wanted to give you that little bit extra about leaving that leeway in there.
And the situation we're talking about is one person made a request for another person's spouse.
That's, that's correct.
So it was actually a third, third level of third party, but even the direct from the person involved.
We got a motion, second, we got a motion, first, that's correct.
I just wanna make sure of that. Hope that is HIPAA part. So if I send an email to Dan about somebody, that.
Yeah, there are certain, certain things HIPAA that we're gonna have to do. And go back to what Scott said, if it's county business, if it's something that I have to move, because I have to send HIPAA stuff sometimes. But that's where it's important to have that confidentiality statement on there. And, and we just keep it county business, you're gonna be safe.
It's not listed to you or not.
Right.
I just wanna make sure that.
All of our email communications are done, and all of that is public record. Somebody could request a seal.
They can, but if there's HIPAA in there, and if we state HIPAA, we can redact that.
Any other questions or discussion? Start panel. We have a motion and a second to approve these, uh, uh, policy changes. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say aye. Motion carried. Out of number thirteen, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty twenty one budget amendments.
The only one we have, I believe, pertains to.
Yes.
The issue on, on the, on the, what, what was it?
It was like.
So I make a motion to table this also.
Okay, I'll second it, Tim. Okay, got a motion, got a second. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say aye. Motion carried. Out of number fourteen, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices, departments, county governments, and approval entry claiming courts many as a matter of record.
First thing. Okay, right, I'm ready to go ask that. Last, uh, last meeting that we had, we, we started out best, we started needing one month on the note that we've gotten in. But as close as the month, we were at work for the year. We, three departments had not sent in their monthly reports.
Is there a motion to approve the monthly reports at worst?
Yes.
I would say a motion by Commissioner West, is there a second? Second, second by Commissioner Pearson. Any question, discussion?
All are here.
Do you want a department, please? Do you want?
What department is that attorney in?
JB one, district attorney, county court.
Thank you.
And I'll comment online. LGS has missed my report, and I'm waiting on the correction. I don't wanna turn in a report that's not correct.
And I can understand.
That's a good answer, I think.
Yeah, I feel he is.
Yeah, I've had an unquestioned.
Everybody been doing the freezing one up.
I'm not saying. Okay, all in favor, approve of the monthly reports, say aye. Those opposed, say aye. Motion carried. Out of number fifteen, closed executive session, compliance with section five five, one point zero seven four, effective general code. Uh, we will now enter into a closed executive session. We will, uh, reconvene to open session and discuss any action, if any.